Good evening, everybody. I would like to call the February 9, 2023 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:01 PM. And I would like to ask Mr. Joe Wigginton to give our invocation, please.
Hallelujah, Your Honor. Thank you so much for your many blessings. Thank you for the group that's here. We pray God that this night that we can honor you with the service, making sure we do the right thing for the right people. We pray God that you'd bless this meeting tonight. You bless each and every person that's here. We're grateful again for your love, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. All right, join me in the pledge.
Steve Lau is going to do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Goodman, do we have any amendments to this agenda?
We do, Chair. We have an amendment to address appointing a liaison to the GSBA Superintendent Search, Steve Lau, if we can amend that to action item M.
Do I have, Martha, you clear on that?
Yes, I got it.
Action item M. Do I have a motion to approve this agenda as amended?
So moved. I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? The agenda is approved. First part of our agenda is recognitions. Pickens County School District, 2022, 2023, Gail Vision, Jordan Winter, Chris Parker, Director of Curriculum.
All right, good evening. You guys got the backup quarterback or the pin chitter in here today? Normally Destiny does this. Destiny can't do it today because she's doing professional learning. So I'm here to talk about professional learning. How about that segue? Um, we, Pickens County was selected as one of several districts to receive the Georgia Association of Educational Leaders 2022, 2023 Vision Award. This award is presented to school districts and go above and beyond to engage leaders in the Gail organization, thereby allowing school and district leadership to participate in statewide advocacy, professional learning, and networking to support the future of public education in the state of Georgia. Dr. Goodman accepted this on behalf of our district. If we're in Gail, we want to recognize these people. And what that means is the organizations through Gail, which is a big organization in the state, has these other organizations underneath them, for elementary principals and middle school principals and high school principals and GASPA, other groups. I mean, you know, I win the awards sometimes, right? And all of our groups, you know, we have finance groups, we have curriculum groups, and our district has more people participating in those organizations than most. That's what that means. So really proud of the leadership at the district level, the school level, for trying to better themselves and being a part of these professional organizations. So we were honored with that. So Dr. Goodman accepted on our behalf, and I got the lucky responsibility of getting to present it. So we're going to take a picture. Hold on, Larry. We're going to get everybody, not just me. We're going to take a picture of this thing. So if you're an administrator that participates in any of these organizations, be GACIS or GASPA or GSSA or any of those, come on down. You too, they got a GL four out there?
Take the bad one.
Yeah. Jennifer, in honor of you not getting to do this much longer.
There's Chad.
Much like myself, Chad is a winner of an award in Gail.
Everybody, I gotta sit back some more.
Okay, I got it. Can we send you a picture?
Wait a second.
Everybody who was left, y'all come up and make a picture.
Next agenda item is Superintendent's Reports, Financial Update from Amy Smith, Chief Financial Office.
Mr. Chair, get that thing back away from me. We'll review the general fund revenue, and I do appreciate not having to follow the kids tonight because they're such a fun group, so at least had to follow carpet this time. So a little bit of a break.
Way better.
So our FY23 general fund, our revenue collected through January 2023 is 66.28% of our budgeted revenue. The expenditures totaled 48.63% of our budgeted expenditures. At this point in the year, I always like to remind you, don't get too excited about the expenditures being on a little bit of a delay. For the new board members, the last two months are actually for July and August of '23. They get backed into June. So when we run them, they actually have a June date. The checks are actually issued for July, but they have to be backed into this fiscal year because they are for school work done for this fiscal year. So in the month of June, there will be three months of salaries and benefits recorded. That's why we always look like we're running a little bit behind, but those expenses will definitely come and we do track them in the meantime, just to make sure everybody stays on task. Our consolidation of funds, our Fund 150 reflects expenditures through the month of January. Transfers have been made through the month of December. Those transfers for January have to be processed and reviewed, and it takes about two weeks for that to happen before we can make the transfers. So those are not done before we come to this meeting. That is why they run a little bit on a delay. As I always love to report, the school system has absolutely no debt. Our capital outlay, our splosh revenue for the month of January was $785,830.58. Interest earned is $1,928.09. Expenditures totaled $202,354.23, which brought our month-end splosh balance to $9,695,054.84. Mr. Wallace will be presenting three closeout documents for three of our capital outlay projects. There are a couple of checks that have not been cut that are not reflected in these monies, though, especially for our biggest project. Special revenue funds, we collected 44.94% of our budgeted revenue and expended 63.86% of our budgeted expenditures. This fund runs the other way from general fund. We spend the money first, then we ask for reimbursement for those grant funds or those special revenue funds. Just so you know, we're not overspending those budgets. We can't ask for the revenue just yet. So any questions on that? That's all I have. Do you want me to talk about the amendment? Or we could, it's coming up as an action item?
Well, at the same time, you already have your, I mean, would you mind going ahead and explain?
Okay, we have an FY23 budget amendment on the table that we would like to request. What this amendment is for is we have been awarded $616,770 from the state transportation bond funds. This is actually a special bond. It is not our normal bond funds. It's in addition to, but this is enough money. It is $81,000, sorry, I didn't memorize that part, $88,110 per bus. So anything beyond that is on us. So we would like to amend the general fund budget to add the revenue and the expense in the total of $616,770 to match that grant and amend our capital outlay or splosh funds for the remaining $230,000 that it will cost. The purchase has already been approved by the board. This is to add the funds to the budget. We have to add the revenue side and the expense. So although it does increase both, it is a wash. Does that make sense to everybody? So that's the amendment on the table, and it will be up for your approval later.
Thank you. For our operations in construction, Mr. Chris Wallace, Chief Operations Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Goodman. Appreciate the opportunity to be here this evening. As I mentioned last month, of course, we're doing a question now, so just keep in mind, we got a maintenance worker appreciation day coming up here in the first of March, so right around the corner. And I think I can speak for everyone that we are so appreciative of what our maintenance workers do. Got a great team. Appreciate all the hard work they put in. Just to give you an update for this month, we, through the eighth of this month for the last, January, for the last month of service here, of course, not a full month, but where we start back in the first year, but 145 maintenance requests, and that brings the total up to 1,035 for the year, the school year. Just to give you an idea of what we respond to. And so got eight guys, and we're down one right now, but recovering from surgery, but these guys work hard, so just want to give them a shout out. Facilities, we are, of course, working through the insurance claim process with the field house, and the work of getting and mitigating issues there has been complete. Then contents and going through claiming those damages is what we're at right now. And the GSBA folks have been awesome. The adjusters I worked with, Coach Myers, anybody that we've had to get involved with this has been really good and really helpful. So the contents are a little tricky because some of them belong, they all belong to the school district. Some of them purchased through the school, some of them purchased through the Bush Globe. And so just trying to get, make sure we don't leave anything out there that got damaged. So, and then, of course, we're in the process of figuring out how we're going to utilize that facility going forward, a few choices that, you know, we've presented that we're going to be helping decide on here very soon with you guys. And then the process of repairing anything that was damaged, we do have one more facility that we haven't finished repairing, but it's over at the warehouse. It's a little tricky. It's two block walls, and it's in a dead space, and twin block walls, really hard to get to, and there's going to be some demo work to get those restaurants back running. So it doesn't affect any students, but it does affect a couple of people that work in that facility. So in the process of getting that taken care of and done, it's going to be a little bit of a process, but that'll be part of the insurance claim as well. And the last part for the facilities, I just put it under here, it's not our facilities necessarily, but it affects us. The Georgia Department of Transportation has notified me and us this week that they have officially requested a signal change at the intersection of Drag Drive, Highway 535 there.
Yes.
And that is, yeah, absolutely. That is good, good news, I believe. The only signaling in the county that is like what they're proposing put in there is at the Piedmont Hospital intersection coming north on 515. If you get in that turn lane to turn left into Piedmont, your main entrance, there's two red arrows at the top of that red light and a yellow arrow, and a green arrow, but the yellow arrow does not flash. It's either green, solid, yellow, and then the double red, all in one signal. So that will be in the left turn lane on Drag Drive going south. And then the other lane just has two regular, if it's a straight lane, would have two regular red light that you normally have for a length. So will be a separate signal. They call it a protected arrow, and I do think it will help. I'm very pleased with this, and I'm optimistic that this will help with our issues down there at Drag Drive. So good news there.
Yeah.
Transportation, I'll say a couple of things about the bus order. Of course, that Ms. Smith talked about is the order coming in for, you know, the following year. You have to order them way in advance. So we had an order that was approved and taken care of on back, and it's six buses that we're expecting literally in a day, in the next week or so. And they get in communication with us about that, about getting the camera systems on and all that. So six drivers are patiently waiting to get new buses, and they cycle that based on when they got the last bus, and they have seniority thing there. But going with Thomas buses, be the first Thomas buses that we've ever had. So really excited to get those. And then this order will help us keep our fleet on a 10-year or less cycle. And that is really unheard of when you get out in that realm, from what I've learned talking to other people. So cuts way down on maintenance costs. They have a five-year warranty anyway, so half their lifespan in our fleet is under a type of one. So got that, of course, still leaning on a lot of people to help us drive. Been some sickness, some things we've had to deal with. So we are leaning on some folks, and we obviously need more drivers. So anybody out there, we can use you if you know anybody or send them our way. So transportation's still running. We've got some great people that stepped up to help us. And I do want to say, first one, we had one of our office folks that was very sick this week and had to spend some time in hospital, and she is back home resting now, and we're pleased about that. Just keep hearing your thoughts. School nutrition, Ms. Beth Thompson is here, but she's not in the room tonight. She's working, which is what she's normally doing. She's a very hard worker. But she wanted me to share with you guys that National School Breakfast Week is coming up, March 6th through 10th, and this year's theme is digging the school breakfast. We basically serve a third of our students in the district with our breakfast program, and are always welcoming new students and anyone who would like to join. So welcome to come join for breakfast one-on-one, and if you'd like to, go in the schools. She also wanted to report about meal charges, up around $28,000 in meal charges. That's a pretty high, really, record levels of what she uses as her beverage. And she's working on some revisions to our current charge regulation schedule and the way we do the charges. And she's going to be presenting something maybe a future board for consideration of how to help curtail that, keep that from being such an issue. And I will say, some of this is coming off the heels of the pandemic and where they, you know, they didn't have to fill out forms and that kind of thing. And now we're back to filling those forms out. So there's been a push for that, and we just, we had a lot of people that didn't have to fill them out at first a year, and then it's hard to get them back in the habit of doing that. So we had some charges that built up there. We don't have an incentive necessarily for them to pay or any recourse, so they will keep accumulating unless they're paid for through community donations or via the general fund. So there's some regulations about how you can pay for those things throughout, Ms. Smith, as you said, you can. Just pay for them just any way you want to. There are some regulations. So the last update I have out of my area is the school health update, and if Ms. Martha will pull up the report for February, Gail Smith, I think did a great job putting this graphic together to kind of show you guys. And I'm going to have her do this each month to kind of give you an idea of the kind of operation that is going on there. It was due to help, as you can see, a lot of clinic visits. The Mobile Health Service that we're partnered up with has been very helpful and useful, and I think the staff have really benefited from this, and it's helped keep our staff sometimes at school and not having to leave, and other people are taking advantage of that as well. So kind of gives you an idea of what the health indicators there. She listed a few things that are most prevalent, and thought it was a good way to put that together and kind of give you guys some data on what the school health clinics are dealing with. So that's it for what I have. Any questions for me?
Good job.
Thank you all.
Next item, curriculum update from Carolyn Wilkins, the Director of Curriculum.
Good evening. My pleasure to be here, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Dr. Goodman. The Curriculum and Instruction Department continues to work to support schools towards their goals of reaching their school improvement goals. Support for our schools comes in many different forms. Part of that is monthly meetings that we have with academic coaches and principals, assistant principals, media specialists, and gifted coordinators. We also have monthly meetings at each school where I sit down with the principals, and we talk about their goals and how we can support them with their individual needs. We're looking at short-term goals, like training paraprofessionals to support students and teachers in classrooms, as well as long-term goals, like coordinating the training of approximately 30 teachers and strategies for working with students who have characteristics of dyslexia. Currently, we're beginning to work on identifying essential components for the elementary reading block so that we can provide high-quality, universal instruction in all of our elementary schools. In math, our schools are finishing up their training for the new math standards that will roll out next year. We're also collecting information from the schools about their textbook and resource needs so that we can align the curriculum for what they need at their schools. And now we are also working on introducing thinking maps to more of our schools. I had the pleasure today of working over at the high school with the ELA department for a full-day training, and I think I left them very excited about how they can start using these tools tomorrow. Our goal is really to support the mission of each school and support the principals in what they need to help their staffs move forward. I think in the materials that you have tonight, you actually have a graphic which will show you a breakdown by each school, what we've worked on there, as well as district-wide, and the methods that we've used for those professional developments. And I can answer any questions that you might have as well.
And Ms. Wilkins, is this an example of Pickens?
It sure is. This is a tree map. They have a tree map. So it categorizes the information by the schools, then by the entire district, school leaders, and then monthly GACIS. Any questions?
And then behind there, you've attached, I think, some examples.
I did. I think I put a couple of samples of the monthly newsletter that we put out to support teachers as well. I'm going to get some good feedback from teachers about that.
Is there now an endorsement that teachers can get for dyslexia?
There is. So the state will roll out the '24, '25 school year, that any students in grades K to 2 who show characteristics of dyslexia must be in the classroom with a teacher who has the dyslexia endorsement. And so we have partnered with North Georgia RISA. So we have 15 teachers and myself who are currently taking that coursework so that we can start to be prepared for it. There's another training, and it's called Letters, and it's by the Lexia Corporation. Letters also is a very high-quality professional learning for teachers, which teaches them the strategies to use with struggling readers who essentially are students who have characteristics of dyslexia.
That is great.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's really exciting. And everybody who's in either of those two coursework is really excited about what they're working on and how they're learning.
That's great.
So we were fortunate, because North Georgia RISA still had scholarships to pay for those courses, so it's not costing our district anything at this time.
Carolyn, there was a great deal of resources, predominantly federal, but there was also state and a little bit local on a remediation program. How are some of those coming?
So at the junior high and the high school, they both have year-long courses for students who are struggling readers. So we have been putting a lot of resources in those classrooms for them. We've provided them with some materials that the teachers can use for direct instruction, as well as some high-interest but low readability level, just books for the kids to have so they have access to more books, because we know the more they practice, the better they're going to be at that. In the, in all the schools, we're working on a response to intervention model, which is helping our schools align the resources that they have with the tools that the kids need in order to improve their skills. So we're working very closely with the teachers on helping them understand that RTI process. That's, in fact, where Ms. Chope is right now, with a teacher from every school who's out learning some more information about RTI to bring back here, to infuse some new ideas in what we're doing.
Wonderful.
Mm-hmm. We're really working on that.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins.
There are two other action items. The first action item is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel action report as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Next item, do I have a motion to approve the financial reports presented by Ms. Smith? So moved.
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? And the next item is the approval of FY23 budget amendment. And Ms. Smith went over that, that was dealing with the buses. Do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment as presented? So moved. A second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Next items are approval of change orders with Carol Daniel Construction for intercom and VoIP upgrades. And Martha, can we see those?
You will talk.
Chris, can you speak to these?
Yes, I should have mentioned this when I was up before. Apologize. So what you're going to have are three separate change orders. This is something we have to close, have to have to close out these projects. I'm happy to report, just like this one shows the negative, all three of these came under the GMP, the Gross Maximum Pricing of these projects. So this particular one was for the voiceover IP phone system, intercom systems that we had put in the schools, and I can tell you, those systems are great from a school standpoint. They're awesome.
So Chris, is this the entire school system? Or is this a voiceover IP for every?
Yes, and the phone system is county-wide, right? Patrick, all of our facilities, county office everywhere, and they're really, really nice.
That was undertaken some time ago. Mr. Lau, our own phone system became so old that we couldn't even get parts and replacements.
Sure. Any questions about that one?
We want to take these one at a time? Yes, they're being one at a time. The first one, which was the communication system, do I have a motion to approve the change order? Second? Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? And the next item, the change order with Carol Daniel Construction at the Barnes Family Agricultural Facility.
Yeah, so this one's pretty fresh, and Martha's got it coming up here, 452, I think it was, was the total, 452,000. Of course, this is a larger dollar value project. So there were some contingencies built into this project. I came in, of course, kind of on the back end of this, but the, there was some inflation contingency that we put in because building materials, when they started this thing, we didn't have a clue what, you know, what we were going to be up against. So there was some contingency money there, but that gives you an idea of where that project came in at and what it was slated, you know, with those contingencies. So always good to come under that gross maximum pricing.
Originally, I believe, we thought that project might have cost as much as $8 million, and then we got to guarantee maximum, we were glad it was going to be considerably less. And now it's come in almost $15 million under what we expect. So that's very strong. Do I have a motion to approve this change order with Carol Daniel Construction?
I'll make that motion.
Ms. Smith?
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? And the next one is change order with Carol Daniel Construction for the Pickens Junior High Greenhouse.
Yes, the greenhouse is around 10,007, it's 10,074. They came in under that total gross maximum pricing. You can see the details there laid out in that document, and that greenhouse is nice and functioning, and they are getting to use that. Proud of it for their facility, for those kids, so they're getting, they got two nice facilities over there, get to utilize for labs.
Thank you, Chris. Do we have a motion to approve the change order with Carol Daniel Construction for the Pickens Junior High Greenhouse as presented? So moved. Second. Is there any discussion? All in favor? And the next action item is approval of memorandum of clinical affiliation with Chat Energy Technical College. Dr. Goodman, can you tell?
Yes, these are MO, memorandum, memorandums, MOUs that we've signed for several years, and this one is in agreement with Chat Tech for occupational therapists, for them to come observe our occupational therapists in our student services department.
Do I have a motion to approve this MOA with Chat Energy Tech and the Pickens County School Board as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Next item is memorandum of understanding and learning experience agreement with Kennesaw State University.
This is for our nursing students to come in and assist our school nurses with screenings for scoliosis, health fare, hearing, vision, and other conditions that we have at the school nurses. So that's their practicum, that they come in and help us out. Any questions?
Do I have a motion to approve the MOU with Kennesaw State University?
I'll move we approve it.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? And the next item, memorandum of agreement with Shorter University.
This is for professional school experiences for their teacher prep program, so they can come in and do interim practical and student teaching through Shorter. That's what this is.
Always valuable to have, in my experience, to have these with our students. That's an opportunity to look at what's been coming, respect to the forward. Do I have a motion to approve the MOA with Shorter University and the Pickens County School Board of Education as presented?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
All in favor?
The next item is out-of-state PHS cheerleading summer camp. I have here that I have here, the Pickens High School Cheerleading Program. I'd like the folks taking the varsity sideline team to an out-of-state camp this summer. This camp will be attended by several other high school, junior high programs from around the nation. As a result of this camp, our PHS varsity sideline team will receive one-on-one coaching from certified collegiate athletes and coaches from various regions of the United States that will participate alongside other teams and compete for performance-based awards, bringing home new skills and knowledge for Friday night lives. And the camp is at Auburn University, June 5th through the 8th, and expected attendance, 20 to 25 students. And the college per student, which they recovered, is $442. Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion to approve the out-of-state cheerleading summer camp as presented?
I move we approve this.
Do I hear a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Next item, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the January 12 call board meeting, the January 12 call regular board meeting at 6:00 p.m., and the February 2nd call board meeting, which was a training and work session?
Make a motion.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? The next item is approved for surplus and...
Do I take a vote?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor? I got ahead of myself. I apologize.
You're trying to get to the adjournment.
Expect we're hungry, separate houses.
Those people are hungry?
The next item is surplus, annual surplus of books. I think everybody's had an opportunity to review those. Do I hear a motion to approve the surplus from the elementary media center? Second. If there any discussion? All those in favor? And the next item, which would be item M, which was the amendment, do I hear a motion to let Steve Lau as the liaison with the Georgia School Board Association in their search for super ten?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All votes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Next item, public participation. Dr. Goodman, have we received any requests for public participation?
We have not.
Next item is there, vote for comments. I was catching up on my housekeeping up here. I'd like to thank everybody for their efforts. And I'd like to wish everybody a very happy Valentine's Day, and a very safe and happy New Year. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Do I hear a second?
You want four of them or one?
How about you? All those in favor? Is there any discussion? All those in favor? We are adjourned at 6:30. We are adjourned at six thirty-seven.